Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, October 12th, and we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we have a couple of pieces of business to address and turn it over to Commissioner Giffens to start.
Good morning. At an August 31st meeting to discuss the convention center, which the mayor did not attend in person, a deadline was created by the mayor's office to respond to a proposal to take over the convention center. The deadline was not tied to any reasonable related issue or impact related to the calendar and/or concerns about the state legislature. We are disappointed and dismayed at the actions of the mayor's office. At that August 31st meeting, the group decided to meet again. The poll that was emailed to all meeting participants, the poll was emailed, sorry, to all meeting participants, but a date amenable to anyone, to everyone was not agreed upon. A subsequent poll was issued with later calendar dates and times included. The mayor's office did not respond to the poll. When a date was identified when everyone else could attend, our office contacted Mrs. Carmichael via telephone. She declined to respond and noted in an email message that we had missed the quote deadline unquote. So she would not be meeting with us.
We don't see any evidence of collaboration. We were informed by Ms. Carmichael, representative of the mayor's office, at the August 31st meeting that the option of a CIB was unilaterally off the table, and the city administration would only support pursuing the project alone using a 501(c)(3) structure. A 501(c)(3) is not transparent. There is no requirement for public meetings, public comment, or public input. With the potential inclusion of food and beverage tax dollars to fund this project, we do not believe that this is appropriate. In addition to, in addition, a publicly held convention center has tort claim protection that a 501(c)(3) entity does not.
So in summary, we have worked over many years with the city to develop plans for a capital improvement board or CIB. And when the COVID crisis began, of course, the convention center project was no longer priority. The mayor's office and the Chamber of Commerce recently revived the project, and it may be that the city administration sought this outcome all along. We have no way of knowing that. But we are not giving up. We believe it would be beneficial to organize the next meeting in good faith. We will invite the city council, county council, and the mayor to attend. If the mayor's office chooses not to attend, we will still hold the meeting. And this will be an opportunity for all of us who are interested in pursuing a collaborative approach to consider all of our viable options. Right? And following that, we have our proclamation for Lake Monroe Day.
Whereas Lake Monroe has been used as a drinking water source since 1967 and currently provides drinking water to over 130,000 people. Lake Monroe and its adjacent wetlands provide critical habitat for wildlife, including the bald eagle. Monroe County has taken an active role in protecting the health of the watershed and the water quality of Lake Monroe. And Lake Monroe provides scenic opportunities and recreational opportunities, including fishing and swimming. These opportunities improve the quality of life for county residents and bring tens of thousands of visitors to the area each year. Lake Monroe generates over $40 million in economic impact annually from recreational tourism.
Whereas the Monroe County Stormwater Board has provided financial support for the development and implementation of a watershed management plan and a community action initiative project in collaboration with Friends of Lake Monroe. The Stormwater Board has also provided financial assistance to install a steam gauge, stream gauge on South Fork Salt Creek to monitor water flow and enable the calculation of pollutant load. And Monroe County has shown its dedication to protecting and preserving Lake Monroe by ensuring compliance with environmental protection provided by local ordinances and federal statutes.
And whereas every resident business and community depends on clean, abundant water and has a responsibility to do their part to protect Lake Monroe as a valuable resource for generations to come, we recognize the vital importance of Lake Monroe and make a commitment as a community to protect and preserve it. The Monroe County Board of Commissioners will be attending the Lake Monroe Watershed Summit in Brown County on October 22nd, 2022, to meet with regional leaders, to share ideas, and to explore potential collaborative opportunities to protect Lake Monroe. Now therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners proclaim October 22nd, 2022 as Lake Monroe Day in Monroe County. All right, so with that, we will turn to our department updates. And we have Ms. Kelly joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. So just a few updates. We are tracking numerous variants of the virus that causes COVID. The primary variant at this time still remains to be Omicron. We are continuing to track the subvariant BF-7. Its prevalence has doubled in the United States over the past two weeks. BF-7 symptoms are similar to the original variant. This includes sore throat, congestion, fatigue, cough, and runny nose. The Health Department has free home tests available. The Public Health Clinic has vaccines available. Appointments can be made by calling 812-353-3244. In addition, we are currently working with the State of Indiana to set up a mobile vaccination unit. So we hope to know more about those dates here soon.
That's great news to hear about the mobile vaccination unit. I myself struggle to find an appointment to get the booster, and I'm sure others are in the same boat. So that is really good news and appreciate the hard work on that. You have comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I just completely agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. We really appreciate it. We're seeing different variants popping up around the world and in significant numbers. And so for those who are eligible, it would be great to get boosted. Did you have any comments or questions? Okay, sorry. Thanks. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other departments have an update for us? Ms. Bridge?
Just a real quick one. I just wanted to let the public know that the Smith Pike Curry Pike Woodyard Road intersection all opened up yesterday about 4:15. So it's a little different of a roundabout because it's a dog bone. So just have patience going through it. It's a learning curve for a lot of people that are not used to roundabouts, but it looks great. Turned out great, so.
Excellent. That is such good news. Why didn't we have a ribbon coating? And I appreciate the pun about the learning curve. Yeah. All right. Okay. Thank you so much. That is a wonderful update. Appreciate it. Yeah, there is a lot of construction going on in this area, and so just always be mindful and slow down and make sure that we're keeping all those highway workers safe. All right. Next, we have public comment. Public comment on our agenda is reserved for items that are not on our agenda. Each commenter is limited to three minutes. And at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone which will indicate that you have 30 seconds remaining to complete your statement. Mr. Spoonmore from the Chamber of Commerce. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll be very brief. Just a couple of things. Thank you all so much for the focus that you put on improving our infrastructure with these improvements. I know the community is very excited about these roundabouts and it's good for business, it's good for the community, it's good for our residents, and so we just appreciate all these enhancements coming to our infrastructure. So thank you for that. Also, thank you for addressing the convention center situation. I think the chamber has always advocated for a very collaborative approach to this. I think that's what was promised to the community in 2017 when the food and beverage tax was passed. Very thankful that you're willing to continue these conversations and inviting the county council, the city council, the mayor back to the table. I think that, you know, these are big projects and we know that there's going to be some turbulence. But when we achieve these large community goals, it often involves compromise. And so I just encourage everyone to continue working together. And the chamber wants to be there as a partner to support and facilitate any way that we can. But thank you again for addressing it. We look forward to future developments with the convention center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Does anyone else have public comment to offer? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back for our next agenda item. Item five, please.
Move approval of the minutes from October the 5th, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
I didn't see any.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes for October 5th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable October 12th, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Littler, please tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. Accounts payable for October 12th, 2022 is $831,438.60.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Looks like we have Ms. Wilkie Cassidy. Good morning.
Good morning. I had actually wanted to make a comment about the minutes from last week's meeting. I had my hand raised. But you guys have already taken a vote on that, so.
Right. We don't typically take comment on meeting minutes. Do you have anything you want to add?
You asked for public comment. And I raised my hand.
Public comment on the approval of the claims docket, but typically we do not ask for comment on our minutes. But you're welcome to provide anything.
Okay, well, I just wanted to provide that in the minutes, there was a statement about being able to make, to give feedback and fill out a survey regarding the ARPA state and local recovery funds that are available. And that was actually expired last week when it was mentioned on the on the notes. I actually tried to go to that link because I wanted to make a comment and couldn't do so. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's all.
Okay, thank you so much. And actually, we are planning a listening session for October 24th at 5:30. So another opportunity, because yes, the survey is closed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, all those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable October 12th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. We will now move on to new business, please.
Move approval of RECO agreement amendment on name cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $69,413.28. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Crum.
Good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's okay. This is actually a continuation of business that we did in September where we signed this lease agreement. Originally thought that Wells Fargo would just drop a new finance contract to go with the RECO. Instead, Wells Fargo has asked that they amend the current contract finance agreement to put in a new term. So this is just a request for that amendment paperwork to be signed so that Wells Fargo can do that.
Okay, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. So as you note, this is replacing a previous agreement. We're basically revising an existing agreement that we've already approved.
That is correct.
Got it. Yep. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you for working through this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the RECO agreement amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2022-27, the 2023 Monroe County government holiday schedule, which includes two floating holidays. Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Purdy.
Yes, good morning. This resolution that's going to be approved by you today is different than the one that appears in the packet. Because what we have done is we've noticed that the only elections in 2023 are those held for the city of Bloomington. And so all Monroe County government employees, full-time employees, will receive two floating holidays that they can be used upon approval by their direct supervisor. And those holidays have to be used within the year 2023. They will not be carried over if you somehow failed to use one.
Right. Thank you. Would you like to review those holidays for us, please?
Oh, sure. So keep in mind, this is for 2023. And so the first holiday will be Monday, January 2nd. That'll be New Year's Day observed. Monday, January 16th, MLK Day. Friday, April 7th, spring holiday. Monday, May 29th, Memorial Day. Monday, June 19th, Juneteenth, observed. Tuesday, July 4th, Independence Day. Monday, September 4th, Labor Day. Friday, November 10th, Veterans Day, observed. Thursday, November 23rd, Thanksgiving Day. Friday, November 24th, day after Thanksgiving. Monday, December 25th, Christmas Day. Monday, December 26th, day after Christmas. Friday, December 29th, New Year's Eve, observed. And then we have two additional employee choice for the holidays.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, I don't have my phone with me. Um, there's a small error. We're going to correct you real quick.
Okay.
I am guessing that the 26th is a Tuesday. The 26th is a Tuesday. Yeah. So it's Tuesday, December 26th.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and just make that Scrivener's error correction. We don't really need an amendment, but we'll get that addressed before it goes out.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments, questions? Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Any, oh, yes. Please.
Can I just add, ma'am, sorry, in regards to this, can I add the last time that we did the floating holidays, we added language about new hires and the sort of the prorated days that they would receive. Does that seem like it's appropriate to add into this as well? I just wanted to mention that we'd done that in the past, that if they were hired at a certain date, they wouldn't get two, two days for the year. They would get one day for the floating holidays.
If they're hired on December 20th, they don't get two floating holidays.
Right, exactly. So I just, yeah, I just wanted to, we've done that in the past, I think, two years ago when we, we had to come back and add that language because it was something we wanted to make sure we could point to that language to make sure that employees.
Yeah, makes sense. Mr. Cockrell, what are your thoughts?
I think we could add that language. I would say that you guys could approve that with the, with the instruction that we would add that language to the resolution prior to signing.
Okay, sorry.
No, thank you.
I didn't even see you.
I was listening. Thanks for saving us.
Thank you, Ms. Sensit. All right, so we will go ahead and note for the record that language will be added to specify new hires of 2023 and a specific holiday, floating holiday schedule for those new hires. And that will be added by HR and Ms. Purdy and Legal. So with that note, thank you. Any other public comment? Ms. Fogg is on Zoom. Counselor Fogg, good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to say this is a great opportunity to say to the public, Monroe County Government is an excellent employer with so many great benefits. And so I just hope that we will all join together to, to let our friends, our neighbors, and the public know that when we have a job opening, it is a wonderful opportunity for many.
Excellent point. Thank you, Counselor Fogg. Okay. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-27 regarding government holidays with a Scrivener's error corrected and with a note on high, new hires in 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you all. Good work. And next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2022-35, Ryman Rezone. Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Krasilias from our planning department joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this Rezone request is located at 8245 South Fairfax Road. It's located in Ancler Creek Township, Section 14. Its property is approximately four acres. The Rezone request is to rezone from pre-existing business to agricultural rural reserve. So here is just a location map to get a just idea of where the property is located currently. So it is located within the Lake Monroe watershed and does have, is within the environmental constraints overlay area too, as well as the pre-existing business zone. Here is a map that shows kind of an overview of the current zoning and also adjacent zoning. So a lot of the adjacent properties are also zoned agricultural rural reserve and properties to the north are zoned pre-existing business, as well as some properties to the south. We have some light business properties and also some bourbon residential, but for the majority, most of the adjacent properties are pre-existing business or agricultural rural reserve. The comprehensive plan from 2012 is identified as rural residential, so the entire area and adjacent properties is seen as rural residential. Here is a pictometry photo from 2021 of the property. So it's four acres. It does contain steep slopes, and it's been developed with a single-family residence and a few accessory structures. The property report card for this property states that the home was built in approximately 1970. The original zoning maps before 1997, the adoption of this current ordinance, does identify this property as pre-existing business, although planning has found no records that would identify that there had, that there was a business on this property. So it may have been lumped in an error, but we can't necessarily confirm that. So the petitioner is requesting this rezone because this is, this is their primary residence, and they would like to be able to build an accessory structure, which currently the expansions, because the property is not zoned for residential use, the residential use is considered pre-existing non-conforming under Chapter 803. So to add a residential accessory structure would be a non-conforming use, which would be prohibited by the ordinance currently. Because the area is in ECO 2, it does contain some steep slopes that are regulated under Chapter 825 for protection of Monroe reservoirs, but the property does have a good amount of area that is considered buildable or contains buildable area, which is slopes that are 15% or less. On the screen are just a couple of photos of the site. So the home has been remodeled within the ability of Chapter 803 of pre-existing non-conforming, so it can be maintained and remodeled, but not necessarily expanded, or the non-conforming use increased in intensity. So the Plan Commission heard this at September 20th, 2022, and they they sent a positive recommendation to the county commissioners by a vote of seven to zero. And staff does recommend approval of this rezone. Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? Given that there are some steep slopes, where would the additional structure likely be placed? Or would they have to go back through and work with you on that?
They do have a fair amount. Let me go back here. On the bottom right is the site conditions map. So areas that are not necessarily colored in a light red are slopes that would be appropriate for a structure, assuming that they can meet their setbacks. So they have not submitted a billing permit, but when they do, we would still go through our normal process for an improvement location permit, make sure that they're meeting those setbacks, road, side setbacks, and that they're on slopes that are appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm always pretty happy to rezone to AgRR. And it certainly makes sense in this case.
Yeah, it really does make a lot of sense. I agree. Let's see if the petitioner, petitioner's representative wishes to offer information on this petition. Brooke Reiman is on Zoom. If you could bring her over.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, the question had been asked where we would be putting a structure. We actually don't have any plans for a structure at this moment. We just had not, when we purchased the property, we, it was a home and we purchased it, you know, with the understanding that we would be able to put a mini storage shed for, you know, our mower somewhere on the property. And then when we had looked into it, that was kind of what triggered this whole process is we weren't even able to put a small shed. So, so we don't exactly know where we would put that or if we would do in addition to the house. It's just we wanted to have this rezone done ahead of time, just to kind of make it be what we always should have been because the, the houses around this, the neighbors have been here since the house was built, and no one can remember any business that was ever done on this property. So this just seemed like the appropriate step to take.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Anybody have questions for the petitioner? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reiman. Let's see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium. Any final comments from the Board of Commissioners? All right, I will go ahead and call the question then. All those in favor of approving Ordinance 2022-35 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Krasilias.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have any appointments today, but I do have a few announcements, something alluded to earlier. On Monday, October 24th at 5:30, the Commissioners, along with the Council, will be hosting a listening session on the proposed ARPA funding project, ARPA-funded projects. And that's going to be at 5:30 right here. And that's going to be at 5:30 right here in the Nat U Hill Room. And you could join us via Zoom if that's easier for you or more convenient for you. So we'll, we'll give a quick overview of the projects and then just open the floor to see what people are thinking about other projects that we haven't thought of yet, anything else. This would be a great opportunity. And then we will move on to the next stage of finalizing that project list. Just a note for everyone as well, this is a great annual event, the Book Fair benefiting Hoosier Hills Food Bank. Starts tomorrow, Thursday, October 13th, 9 to 7. That's $10 admission day. Friday, the 14th, 9 to 7. Saturday, 9 to 6. Sunday, 9 to 6. That's half-price day. Monday, 9 to 6, and Tuesday, 9 to 6 as well. This is all taking place at the fairgrounds and note that you do get a dollar off if you bring a food donation to the Book Fair with you. And I know I will be playing cashier at some point on Sundays, so that'll be fun time. I love doing that. So, all right. But this is a great event and it's really a good opportunity to help support the Hoosier Hills Food Bank, such an important organization in our community. Just a reminder that we have office hours six different times throughout the month. Go to co.munro.in.us and click on the calendar to check out the variety of dates and times where you get to meet one-on-one with one of us. We are taking applications for boards and commissions for 2023. So please go to our website and look around, see what you're interested in, and please apply. Early voting has started. 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the corner of Walnut and Third. And this, October 12th to 14th, 8:00 AM to 6:00, October 17th to 21st, and October 24th to 28th. All of those are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then there are some other dates here. October 29th, 9 to 4. October 31st through November 4th, 8 to 6. And then November 5th, 9 to 4. November 7th, 8 to noon. And then we have Election Day. So thank you, Commissioner Giffens, for pulling that together. And just a reminder for everyone, we will not be meeting next week. We're going on a field trip to a correctional facility, just visiting. So we hope to learn a lot. Get the headlines ready. But we hope to learn a great deal. So we'll be in Kentucky. But so we are not meeting next week and we are going to come back for our next meeting on the 26th of October as usual. We do not have any items on our work session agenda, but I wanted to see if my colleagues had anything else they wanted to add. Commissioner Giffens?
I think tomorrow at the Hoosier Hills Book Fair that it's also Veterans Day, and so veterans get in without a charge.
Nice.
Yes.
Very good.
Yes, I worked that day last year, so that's why. Yeah, and then veterans came in with their DD-214s and things like that. It was just really, it was incredible.
Very cool. That's very cool. That's a nice thing to do. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Ms. Purdy, Mr. Cockrell. All right. Excellent. Great. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.